Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, October 19th, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For this council meeting, we'll be implementing the Governor's Executive Order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows councilors to participate remotely. All votes will be via the roll call. There are seventeen items on this evening's agenda, and I will now ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner is present.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing is present.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish is present.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby is present.
Counselor Tanara. Absent. Ten present, one absent, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I will now ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, October 5th, 2020.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to...
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion on the motion? And then I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Tanara. Absent. Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Ten ye.
Motion to accept and place on file. The minutes is approved, ten in favor and none opposed, one absent. Agenda item number two.
Communication from the mayor regarding certification of free cash in the amount of fifteen million, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Could I ask the clerk to read the letter, please?
Honorable President, Aussing and councilors, I am pleased to inform you that the Massachusetts Department of Revenue recently certified the amount of fifteen million, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars in free cash for the city of Marlborough. This achievement is another sign of our strong economic growth and endorsement of our financial stewardship. Marlborough's smart financial policies are reflective in our financial success as well as our team effort approach. I would like to thank Auditor Diane Smith, interim comptroller Steve Cirillo, President Michael Aussing, and Finance Chair John Irish for their hard work and continued dedication. As in years past, I will submit transfer requests later this fiscal year to move ten percent of the free cash amount to our OPEB account and ten percent to our stabilization account. Thank you for continued partnership, and please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Arthur Vigent, Mayor.
Thank you.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wonderful accomplishment for the city of Marlborough, and this is certainly a teamwork effort. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, Counsel Orem.
Counselor Orem.
Yes, just note, compliments to all that were noted, as well as whoever else is involved with the budgeting and so forth. This was certified as of July 1st, 2020, so as I've mentioned in other Finance Committee meetings, we do need to keep an eye on our financing based on the present situation, as we are all aware of, but I'm glad to hear this news. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other discussions or comments on the motion? On the motion to accept and place on file, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Tanara is absent. Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
And Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file, the correspondence approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number three.
Communication from the mayor regarding a grant acceptance in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council ordered to MEDC to fund the city's shuttle three days per week for on-demand meal deliveries, groceries, and medical appointments booked through the senior center through December 31st.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This certainly will help our seniors and our veterans. I would like to thank MAPC, MEDC, for a great teamwork effort. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I really have to give great credit to Meredith Harris of doing this. It's taken advantage of available resources as far as using the transportation shuttle bus and new ways, so creative use of existing resources, and she's an asset to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other comments or questions from the councilors?
Mr. President.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem, I'm sorry, I'll probably be a little wordy tonight. I got a few items I'd like to discuss, but I would like to concur with Counsel Dusset. He took the words out of my mouth. Many thanks to Meredith Harris, as well as the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. This is a definite need, and I hope we advertise it and get the word out to the many people that do not wish to go outside to grocery stores, especially our elderly population, so I'm glad to see it being run through our elderly council. So with that said, I just hope we continue to announce this in any flyers, any newsletters. It's a great service, and December 31st will be here before we know it, and we may need to take into account maybe additional seed money to keep this going if there's a demand. I expect there will be. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem, and it does run until March 31st, and having on the Board of Directors for the Council on Aging, it is very well received in the senior center, and Director Trish Pope is doing a nice job getting the various senior residents involved in the shuttle service, so it is going, working well, Counsel Orem.
Mr. President, if I may, the letter said through December 31st. Is that incorrect, then?
Yes, there was a revised grant sheet, I think, that came out from the mayor's office that showed it to allow us to expend the funds to March 31st.
Well, thank you for that correction. That's a very important note. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the grant? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
And Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
Motion to approve the grant is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number four.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents from the Center for Tech and Civic Life awarded to the city clerk's office to fund election workers, additional cleaning and temporary help for elections due to COVID-19.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This grant will certainly help to offset any additional costs due to vote by mail. I'd like to thank Clerk, City Clerk Carrigan, and Assistant Clerk Chu, and his wonderful team effort getting this together, and looking forward that you would do any more grants in the future, so motion to approve the grant.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, just a note, and I'll be real quick. Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem.
Just, it's great to see a grant like this. I know the city clerk's been very busy, but I also wanted to note, because I never heard of the Center for Tech and Civic Life, they're out of Chicago, Illinois, so it's nice to see that we were able to get a grant from that far away, so many thanks to whoever were... Many thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Seeing none, on the motion to approve the grant, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Tanara is absent, sorry. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
And Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
On the motion to approve the grant, it is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number five.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Eileen Bristol as city collector for a two-year term effective from date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to move to personnel.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to the Personnel Department.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Sorry, hitting the wrong buttons here, I apologize. Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Personnel Committee, it is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Mary Watson Avery to the Cultural Council for a three-year term from date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to move to personnel, please.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, I was going to yield to Counsel Pearlman, since she was involved with this, but I just want to say a tremendous asset if we indeed decide on this person. The resume is outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem.
Mr. President, I can chime in, Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Orem, you stole my thunder. I thought we'd do this during a committee meeting, but I was going to say, yeah, it was really great to talk to Mary Watson Avery. She was very excited about the possibility of joining the Cultural Council, so I'm really excited to have her go through our process, and she will be a great asset if she's able to be confirmed, so thank you all.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? On the motion to refer to the Personnel Committee, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Personnel Committee, it is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding the LED streetlight retrofit project update.
Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Excuse me, Counselor Orem, but I think that finally having this in place, it took a couple of years for it to happen, but the end result is savings for the city, reduce the light pollution within the city. It's really interesting if you're on a plane and you fly over the communities that have this in place, because you go from these yellow lights that cover everything to very small lights. It's very noticeable from a plane, especially at night, obviously, but more importantly, you know, it shows how technology can be used to result in savings for the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counselor Orem.
And I apologize, I had a feeling I would be concurring with Counsel Dusset, and again, I really am very impressed with the city's actions that we are taking to improve our community and, more importantly, to help out with climate change, so very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Anyone else? On the motion to accept and place on file, the correspondence, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
And Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
On the motion to accept and place on file, the correspondence, it is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 328 of the Code, fire department fees in proper legal form, Order Number 20-108095.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file, the communication from the city solicitor.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file, the communication from the solicitor. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, just a quick point of order or question. Do we want to move that up to item number seventeen on the agenda, or is it just something that we'll include at that point?
We've done it both ways in the past, Counsel Orem, and I really leave it up to the chairs as to what their preference is. It's the same...
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Counsel Orem. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, on the motion to accept and place on file, the correspondence from the solicitor, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
And Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Ten in favor, sir.
On the motion to accept and place on file, the correspondence from the solicitor is approved, ten in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Carrigan regarding election information.
If I could ask the clerk to read his letter?
President, Aussing and councilors, I wanted to provide the City Council and residents of Marlborough with an update on the state election, which will take place on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. The city clerk's office has been working tirelessly to ensure that every request for a vote by mail or absentee ballot is sent as quickly and as efficiently as possible. As of Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, our office has processed nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty requests for vote by mail and absentee ballots. I am proud to say that all of these ballots have been mailed. Residents are reminded that they have until Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. to submit a request for a vote by mail or absentee ballot application. If any resident has not and wishes to register to vote, they have until Saturday, October 24th, 2020, and this can be done, this can be completed by either visiting the city clerk's office, mailing in their form, or completing the registration online. We encourage everyone to register for this and all future elections. In-person early voting begins on Saturday, October 17th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. and continues each day until Friday, October 30th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. Once again, in-person early voting will take place at the Marlborough Senior Center at 40 New Street. The hours are available for each day in addition on the city website. I'm happy to report that all fourteen precinct locations throughout the city will be open on Election Day, Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., to welcome voters who want to vote in person in their respective polling places. Voters have multiple ways in which they can return their vote by mail or absentee ballots. They can be mailed back to our office using the postage-paid envelope that was provided. They can drop them off in the drop boxes located at the front and rear entrance to City Hall or in the drop box located within City Hall. All of the work that has been happening behind the scenes during this election season would not be possible if it were not for the hard work and dedication of the staff of the clerk's office and the election workers who have assisted us throughout this process. There are too many names to mention here, however, I do want to offer my thanks to Wilson Chu, Leo Mercado, and Melissa Peltier, the full-time members of the clerk's office, who have worked extremely hard to ensure that all voters of Marlborough receive their ballot and the information necessary regarding this election. Their work has not gone unnoticed. I would also like to thank in advance the election workers who will be manning the early voting and polling locations for this election. I am humbled by the number of people who have contacted our office offering to serve as election workers even during this pandemic. The extraordinary efforts of my staff and our election workers is a true testament to their dedication to the city and its voters. I urge residents to continue to check the city's website and Facebook page, as we will continue to update information as we get closer to Election Day. If any residents have questions, they can contact the city clerk's office at 508-4603-775. And I thank you for the opportunity to provide this update to you and the residents of Marlborough. Sincerely, Stephen Carrigan, City Clerk.
Nice job, Stephen.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file, the communication from the city clerk. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Steve, an absolutely fabulous job.
Thank you.
I know that you're leading an amazing team, and a lot of credit goes to the team, but also credit goes to the leadership, too.
Well, thank you.
Great job, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? I will note, I was there on Saturday for the early voting, and outstanding job done by the team.
Thank you.
But through three days, you've got over a thousand folks in on the early voting, in addition to the, what, ten thousand now?
And I was going to say, that number of nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty has grown exponentially since Wednesday, sorry.
So kudos to the voters in Marlborough for getting out and exercising their right to vote.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions on the correspondence? I will ask the clerk to call the roll to accept and place on file, the correspondence.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes, with many thanks.
And Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file, the correspondence is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number ten.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding applications for three previously installed signs of "Viva Tratoria" at 142 Apex Drive within the Hospitality and Recreation mixed Usovalay District, Order Number 16-20106443.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer to Urban Affairs.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President. Counsel Orem. Thank you. Just, I want to thank our building commissioner and staff for continuing to pursue this sign that is not legal. I drove by it yesterday, and it's just phenomenally very large, but I'm sure once it's in Urban Affairs, it will be addressed equally there on the concerns that I know, as I do, have as a counselor, I'm sure others have the same concerns. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other questions or comments from the councilors? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to Urban Affairs.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
And Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
On the motion to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee is approved, ten in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number eleven.
Minutes, boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. President.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Proposed to accept and place on file the minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, Counsel Orem. Quickly, I would just like to thank all the committees who meet for us. Fort Meadow, they commissioned, did a great job through the summer, especially with Memorial Beach, and also I would like to compliment the school committee, since they have a very, very difficult job right now through the pandemic, and I just want to congratulate them for the needs and the concerns they've had for the health and safety of our students. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other discussion on the minutes? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to accept and place on file the minutes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file, the minutes is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Reports of committees. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really have a report as much as an announcement. The City Council Urban Affairs Committee started last Thursday with the meeting, beginning discussion at the proposed housing on 339 Boston Post Road. We continue with that this coming Thursday, the 22nd, along with starting discussion with local roots. Thank you.
And seven o'clock start time?
Seven o'clock. Are we six thirty... Seven.
Seven, okay. Again, so that'll be Urban Affairs at seven o'clock on Thursday, October 22nd. Any other reports of committees? Hearing none, we will move to Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Order Number 20-108097, an application for a livery license from Eduard Zoladov, DBA Easy Airport Limousine Service, to operate at 15 Indian Lane. The recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve with one vehicle.
Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the livery license. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
The motion to approve the livery license is approved, ten in favor, none opposed. Agenda item thirteen.
Order Number 20-108093A, proposed salary ordinance amendment to City Code, Chapter 125, Section 6, with the position of Director of Veteran Services, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the salary ordinance.
There's been a motion to approve the salary ordinance. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this is an ordinance change, so it must pass the four stages, so I will ask all those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
And Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Ten ye, sir.
The motion to approve the second reading is approved, ten in favor, none opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir.
Motion to passage to be enrolled is approved, ten in favor, none opposed. On the passage to be ordained, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Tanara is absent. Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir.
The passage to be ordained is approved, ten in favor and none opposed. Is there any counselor, have any objection to approving in one evening? counselor have any objection to approving in one evening? Hearing none, it is approved. Agenda item 14.
Order number 20-100-8093B, the updated job description for the position of Veterans, Director of Veterans Services, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the job description.
Motion made and seconded to approve the job description for the Veterans Director. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Are ten in favor? Motion to approve the job description is approved. Ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 15.
Order number 20-100-8094A, proposed salary ordinance amendment to the City Code, Chapter 125, Section 6, for the position of paralegal, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the salary ordinance.
Motion made and seconded to approve the salary ordinance. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, since this is an ordinance change, it must pass the four stages. So, starting with stage one, all those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. Motion to approve the second reading is approved. Ten in favor and none opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. Ah, let's see, that's on the passage to be enrolled. It is approved. Ten zero. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Excuse me. Ten in favor, sir. On the motion for the passage to be ordained, it is approved. Ten in favor and none opposed. Is there any objection to passage of this ordinance in one evening? Seeing none, the ordinance is approved. Agenda item 16.
Order number 20-100-8094B, updated job description for the position of paralegal, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the job description.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the job description. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. Motion to approve the job description is approved. Ten in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number 17.
Order number 20-100-8095, proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter 328, fees, making changes to Section 2, the fire department fees. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the amended fee schedule and to include the communication from the city solicitor, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the fire department fee schedule as outlined in the communication from the solicitor and approved by the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, again, this is an ordinance change, so it must pass the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. The motion to approve the second reading is approved. Ten in favor and none opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. Motion to have the passage be enrolled is approved. Ten in favor and none opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. On the passage to be ordained, it is approved. Ten in favor and none opposed. Is there any objection by any counselor to be passage in one evening? Hearing none, the fee schedule for the fire department ordinance change is approved. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenere is absent. Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
And Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Ten in favor, sir. The city council is adjourned at 8:39. Well done, city councilors. We are adjourned for the evening.